Mr. President, please call the roll.
Sure. Mr. Ammitz?
Here.
Mrs. Buckley?
Here.
Mr. Christensen?
Here.
Mrs. Cook?
Here.
Mrs. Dobus?
Here.
Mr. Means?
Present.
Mrs. Rule?
Here.
Mr. Spakusa?
Present.
Mr. Workmesser?
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. We have three special presentations this evening, so at this time I would like to turn the podium over to Independence Middle School Principals Dave Minch and George Spalaris, Independence Middle School Librarian Patty Heasley, and our Director of Facilities and Services, Bill Keith, for our first presentation.
Good evening, esteemed members of the school board, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be part of this recognition of such a kind-hearted and dedicated member of the Bethel Park Educational Family. When I was a little boy, my mother gave me one of the simplest, yet most important pieces of advice I would ever receive. She said, "Son, always leave things a little bit better than the way that you found them." In the life he leads, Bill Renninger not only lives those words, he makes them evident in truly every place and in every person for whom his creativity and his love for his work and life has affected. For those of you that don't know Bill, he is easily identifiable through three undeniable character traits. Those traits being unrelenting work ethic, and unrelenting work ethic, his inability to say the word "no" or "that's not possible," and most importantly, his greatest asset, his very, very big heart. And it is these traits that are ingrained in every fabric of Bill's being. They never waver, they never rest, and they always give with love and with a constant big smile. Simply, the world needs more Bill Rennigers. And I'm not sure if that will ever be possible, but in the meantime, we will continue to cherish ours as a school, as a district, and as a community, watching as he constantly makes all of our worlds a little better than the way we found them. Thank you.
You know what I'm gonna say to you. Hey, Sparky! It's kinda how we greet each other every morning. Bill's very special to all of us in the building, me especially. About a year ago, Bill came to those of us who worked in the library and said, "You're getting new carpet." And I said, "Oh, great." And I knew in the past from other libraries that we had to remove all the books from the library. Well, we have sixteen thousand books in the library, so it's no small task. I said, "Just give me enough warning, right?" Okay. So, I said, "Hey, Bill, when we put stuff back, can we change a few things?" He said, "Sure," 'cause that's what he always says. He always says yes, to his demise maybe. So, a group of us got together, and we looked at what we were doing at IMS, and we were transitioning to the one-to-one, had already transitioned to the one-to-one initiative. And so, we looked at the spaces that we had, and we thought about how we're going to use them now, how we're going to use them in the future, what's good for the students, what's good for the staff. And of course, Bill was on board. In fact, every idea we came up with, he would say, "Hey, I was thinking last night, how about this?" So, as many times as he would say yes, we did too with his wonderful, wonderful ideas. What you're seeing on the screen right now is the before. This was our shelving in the library, as I said, the books that we moved out. And one of the things we wanted to change was the shelving. And another thing we were very conscious of was, we wanted to repurpose as much as we could. Because of Bill's extraordinary talent and abilities, we were able to do a lot of that and not have to seek a lot of the funding that we may have had to, had he not had those talents. So, he has such a pride in his work, he has such a work ethic, as George mentioned. He not only did carpet, but he did all the ceilings. He did the walls, he scraped the walls, he painted the walls. The kids can now draw all over at least one wall in every room, of which there are six rooms, by the way, that Bill conquered this summer. And, all the ceilings, did I say that already? And the shelving. Now, we met with furniture people. This is an in-progress. There's our guy there on the left. This is my favorite picture, because you can see it, can't you? You can see his vision, you can see his figuring out the sequence of how things needed to be done, what needed to be gleaned from where and moved here, there, and everywhere. So, you can see the ceilings are out, there's no carpet. If you've noticed, he built us a stage, so we have great presentations on the stage, small to big. We have a very large event next Friday in the library. I welcome all of you to attend our Poetry Cafe, it's an annual event. And so, he went to work on the shelves. PEMCO, who you probably all know, does our furniture for the district. They said, "There's no way these shelves can be cut down." What we wanted to do is, we wanted to cut them down, we wanted to be able to see more clearly, we wanted brightness in the room. And as you can see, they're moving them, he cut them expertly, cut them, repurposed, refashioned them into the wonderful space that we have now. And this is a smidgen of what we have now for the students to come into. It's an absolutely wonderful facility. He lent his talents to anything, he said yes to everything, his experience, his expertise, his positivity is just boundless. And all told, he overdid six rooms, as I said, to allow for collaborative, creative, educational zones for our students and for our staff. So, I invite all of you to see more than what I've shown here. Here's our little after, it took today. You can see it's being used, it's a wide spans, but this only shows you one of the rooms, just the large room in the library. Invite all of you to look at the website of the Independence Middle School Library Learning Commons to see what has been done. I couldn't do it justice tonight by any stretch of the imagination. I admire Bill so much for his craftsmanship, for his expertise, for his vision, for the sequencing of all that he did, and especially his leadership of the staff, whether it's your staff or the staff we share at IMS, you're a true leader. And he is an unmatched educational partner who makes great things happen, and always with a smile.
My name's Bill Keith, I'm the Facilities Director, and it's also my pleasure to be the manager of Bill Renninger. There couldn't be an easier guy to work with, there just couldn't be. I mean, not only did he do what you've seen up there, he manages his staff throughout the summer, at the same time cleaning, painting, repairing, doing whatever's asked of him to do, never a no with him, as everybody said, everybody admires Bill. Just wanna let you know that from the heart. I admire you, I honestly do, okay? With that said, not only did Bill do this, but within the last few years, he's also, if you had a chance, and we don't have any pictures, but there are two restrooms across from the auditorium, please step in and look at them. He did that at substantial cost. Also, I just wanna let you know, Bill did this with very little help. He had a little bit of help for our AV guy and our electrician, but he did the majority of it, of the work, I'd say about eighty-five to ninety percent, and the custodians helped him too, which was amazing, because it allowed the maintenance men to go out and do other stuff at other buildings. So, that was just a wonderful thing he did. And Doc, you'll like this, he did that with very little funding, okay? All right. So, just wanted to go over that with you, and obviously, always admire his talents, he's a talented individual, and he happens to be a contractor at Horton, that was your former business, right? And we're lucky to get him, okay? So, I'm gonna just present Bill with a few things, parting gifts. Oh, you're not retiring? What up, Bill? First thing we're gonna do is gonna give him a certificate of appreciation from the district for all you do, okay? And I signed it, so that makes it official.
Thank you.
Next thing I wanna do is give him this, we came together, this is from the whole maintenance unit, wanted to give you this, all right? And it says, "Thank you for your help building a better life." And a school is just a building, which we all know, until a guy likes this, then he makes it a school, along with everybody else, and he has made that a school. Thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Now, one more thing before you go, we wanted to give you some golf balls. All right? There's twenty-four of them.
Okay.
Whether you would like to use them in retirement, which I hope you don't do, or use them now, 'cause I hear he's a pretty good golfer.
They don't exclude, do they?
No, they don't exclude. So, I wanted to give you these as a personal gift, and again, I wanna thank you for everything you do.
Thank you.
Well, I too, on behalf of the board, Mr. Renninger, wanna thank you for all that you do to make Independence Middle School a more beautiful place, and I've seen those restrooms, they are gorgeous. We truly appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Now, it is my pleasure to announce that the Bethel Park School District has been named one of twenty-four Allegheny County School Districts to have earned the distinction of being a wellness champion by the Allegheny County Schools Health Insurance Consortium. The district earned this distinction because more than fifty percent of our employees who are covered under our health insurance went online and registered to be a wellness champion. These employees completed an online wellness profile and downloaded the Health E-Compass mobile app onto their smartphones. Just by taking these two small steps, they each earned a $100 Giant Eagle gift card that will be coming to them from the consortium by the end of this month. This year, two-hundred-and-ninety-five of our employees earned $29,500 worth of Giant Eagle gift cards. Because the district was named a wellness champion, we were recognized at the Allegheny Intermediate Unit's annual convention, which was held on March 29th at Station Square, and presented with a plaque and a check for $5,000, which will be used to fund future district wellness initiatives. I am also proud to say that Bethel Park was one of only two entities to earn this $5,000 check. Other amounts given to other wellness champion school districts ranged from $1,000 to $4,000, but Bethel Park received the largest award, along with our friends at the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. Accepting the award on behalf of the school district were our Wellness Coordinator, Mary Gallagher, and our Wellness Committee Chairperson, Joe Consolmagno. They are both here with us this evening, and we want to recognize them for the work they do to promote wellness with our employees. I want to also recognize Mary for all of the encouragement she gave to the employees to register for this program. Little arm twisting sometimes, right, Mary? Also, representing the district at this event were Superintendent Dr. Pascarella and School Directors Russ Spakusa, Cindy Buckley, and myself. We are extremely proud to be named a wellness champion, and at this time, we're gonna try to recreate the photo that we did down there, so I'm gonna ask Mary and Joe and my group up here to join us over here to take a picture with the plaque and the check.
There's no X's. You see, you could find it.
You guys have the same outfits on that you had on that night. All right, squishy, squishy. All right, all right, now, Mary, wait, hang on just a second. You gotta, you, no, you gotta go that way, you're blocking a boss out. Okay, ready in, all right, ready. All right, ready. One more. Okay.
This evening, it is our pleasure to welcome back Allegheny County Councilwoman Sue Means for another special recognition. Mrs. Means, the podium is yours.
Officer Modrek, will you please come forward? It is my great honor to be here this evening to recognize a wonderful individual that has made great contributions to our community and our school district. I've known Officer Modrek personally for over twenty-six years, and I can tell you that he always, always has the best interest of students at heart. Also, this gentleman has been instrumental in making our school district safer, and it was my deepest appreciation to honor him and recognize him for his contributions. I'm gonna read the proclamation to you right now. Whereas Allegheny County has been blessed with exemplary leadership throughout our rich history, with visionaries of great knowledge and determination, making invaluable contributions to our community, our country, and the world. Whereas Officer Jim Modrek joined the Bethel Park Police Force as a patrolman in 1987. He was named Officer of the Year twice and retired in 2002 after twenty-five years of dedicated service. And whereas, following his distinguished career with the Bethel Park Police on April the 4th, 2002, Officer Modrek became Bethel Park School District's first school resource officer. He received the Bethel Park Extra Mile Award for going the extra mile with students and staff. And whereas, in 2012, Officer Modrek became the Bethel Park School District's first school police officer, planning and directing Bethel Park High's safety and security efforts. During Officer Modrek's tenure, he coordinated educational and crime prevention programs throughout the district and was responsible for bringing alert lockdown, inform, counter, and evacuate ALA Safety Program to Bethel Park. And whereas, Officer Modrek always had the best interest of the students in his care in mind, serving as a positive role model and developing a rapport with the children in order to open the lines of communication between students, administrators, and law enforcement. And whereas, Officer Modrek was instrumental in providing a proactive and positive police presence in the school environment and successfully provided two-way communication between the Bethel Park Police Department and the Bethel Park School District, working to keep our schools and our community safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that Allegheny County does hereby honor and thank Officer Modrek for his tremendous contribution to the cause of safety and security, serving the Bethel Park School District and the community with utmost integrity. His long and distinguished service deserves the accolades of our citizenry, and this council wishes him the best in all his future endeavors.
Thank you.
Always, always, I mean, you know, she won't.
Stand up, too.
Thank you, everyone, for reminding me.
Thank you very much.
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Yes, I have one under personnel. I would like to add, under 8B1, it should read as follows. Jacqueline Wilcox, twelve-month secretary at the high school, should be effective July 3, 2017, at the rate of eighteen dollars an hour.
Okay. Any others? Then I need an intent to adopt the agenda as amended.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of March 28, 2017, and the business meeting of April 18, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held April 4, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; April 18, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information; and April 25, 2017, for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report, Ms. O'Rourke.
It is my pleasure to be able to share the following items of good news with you this evening. For the third consecutive year, the Bethel Park School District has been honored with the Best Communities for Music Education designation from the National Association of Music Merchants Foundation for its outstanding commitment to music education. Bethel Park is one of only four percent of the school districts across the nation to receive this award in 2017. The Best Communities designation is awarded only to those districts that demonstrate outstanding achievement and efforts to provide music access and education to all students. Congratulations to our outstanding music department staff for this well-deserved recognition and for their ongoing commitment to making Bethel Park one of the best music programs in the country. It is so gratifying to know that a national organization also recognizes what we've known for so many years. The Bethel Park Music Department is the best. The Bethel Park High School chapter of the National Honor Society inducted sixty-one students on April 19th, including one senior, eleven juniors, and forty-nine sophomores. To be eligible for induction, students must maintain a minimum of a 3.85 GPA, perform a minimum of thirty-five hours of community service in the year prior to their induction, demonstrate leadership, obtain two letters of recommendation from high school faculty, and complete an essay explaining how they embody the four pillars of the National Honor Society members, which is character, scholarship, leadership, and service. Congratulations to these students. Four female Bethel Park High School students who expressed an interest in learning more about engineering intended, attended the Introduce a Girl to Engineering Day at Westinghouse Cranberries Headquarters. Participating in this event were Nicole Demziek, Meredith Hay, Sabrina Totalius, and Brianna Shannon. They were able to participate in various engineering and team-building activities that were able to learn more about careers in engineering, thanks to this event that was sponsored by Women in Engineering. Bethel Park High School students Jessica Vayman and Angela Burns participated in the Pittsburgh Regional Science and Engineering Fair and were recognized for their projects. Jessica earned seven awards for her project, and Angela received two scholarships for her project. Congratulations to both of these young women. Jessica is interested in pursuing a career in engineering, while Angela is interested in pursuing a career involving cancer research. Speaking of Angela Burns, she will continue to pursue her career passion this summer as a summer intern for the University of Pittsburgh Cancer Institute's Summer Academy. Angela will be working with Pitt researchers at the Hillman Cancer Center at Shadyside Hospital, focusing on the molecular biology aspects of cancer research. This is the second summer Angela will be a part of this program. Last summer, she worked with the Drug Discovery and Computational Biology Lab at Pitt to study why tumors grow. A group of Bethel Park High School and Independence Middle School students won eight awards at the Southwest Regional Science Olympiad. This competition has students from twenty-six schools competing as teams in twenty-three different events that tested their knowledge on all areas of science, problem-solving, engineering, and design. Bethel Park students came home with one second place, two third place, and five fourth-place awards. Congratulations to these students. Congratulations to Bethel Park High School students Logan Huey, Dylan Postetary, Evan Aaronhalde, Emily Cowser, Sarah Gilliam, Sarah Long, Matt McKintrick, and Joseph Wright, and Independence Middle School students Alex Markounas and Dimitri Fikos. Bethel Park High School science teachers Monica Graziani and Alex Winchell received a $600 grant from the Spectroscopy Society of Pittsburgh to produce science lab equipment that would enhance students' understanding of spectroscopy, which is the study of the interaction between matter and light. With this grant, the teachers will receive multiple spectrovis plus spectrometers, which will be used in both biology and chemistry labs to study light. This equipment is capable with, compatible with the students' Chromebooks and the lab quests that the students have access in their science labs. Both teachers will be recognized at a special awards night that will be held on May 24th at Duquesne University. We are extremely proud of the efforts of these two teachers to bring this high-tech equipment into our school at no cost. Bethel Park High School seniors Stephen, Kevin Yost, Courtney Mans, Ryan Lynch, and Samuel Goby were honored at the annual Allegheny County Youth Achievement Dinner sponsored by the American Legion and held at Soldiers and Sailors Memorial Hall. The students were recommended by the high school faculty and administration for excelling in areas such as academics, athletics, extracurricular, and community service. Samuel was one, was recognized for his participation in the Pennsylvania Boys State Program, which is sponsored by the American Legion. Our students were sponsored at this event by the Bethel Park American Legion Post 760, and we thank them for their annual sponsorship for our students at this event. Four Bethel Park High School students had their work selected to be exhibited at the 2017 High School Students Exhibition at the Clay Place in Carnegie. Congratulations to Maddie Condi, Angelina DeFalleese, Dylan Laritzen, and Megan Zettiger. The Rotary Club of Bethel Park named Bethel Park High School Senior Emily Cowser as the February Student of the Month, and Senior Maggie Woof as the March Student of the Month. Each month during the school year, the Rotary Club recognizes Bethel Park High School students for outstanding commitment to school and community. Emily was recognized for her work with the National Honor Society's Community Service Committee and her mission trips with her church. Maggie was recognized for her work with student government to coordinate Spirit Week and Staff Appreciation Week. Congratulations to both of these students. Bethel Park High School and Independence Middle School students earned ten medals at the Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America State Conference, including four gold medals, four silver medals, and two bronze medals. The gold medalists are now members of the Pennsylvania National Team and are eligible to compete at the FCC LA National Competition, which will be held in July in Nashville. All of the medalists' names are on the screen for you, but we want to take, highlight the gold medalists. Bethel Park High School students Jess Morgan and Emily Kerick, and Independence Middle School students Kelly Catalius, Jessica Too Good, Tessa Wagner, Alicia Vauter, Shia Epperson Butler, and Michaela Carter. Good luck at Nationals. Independence Middle School eighth graders Nico Torano, Zach Wozorkowski, and Logan Wright did a fantastic job helping technology education teacher Mr. Spitznagel to build a beautiful cabinet to house the new CNC router that is located at the Still City Laboratory in the IMS library. The wood cabinets helps to protect the router and also muffle the noise that the router makes when it is in use. The students' names are on a plate that is affixed to the cabinet to let everyone know who worked on this project. They did a great job. Independence Middle School teachers Carol Chanaska, Kristen Fonda, Kara Ritz, Jennifer McCall, and Principal David Minch will receive the Scott E. Fulmer Memorial Student, Teacher in Exemplary Practice or Partnering Award in the school category. The STEP Award annually recognizes the outstanding support of children who are receiving special education services. They will be honored at the May 3rd ceremony at Still Valley High School. Also receiving an honorable mention in the student category is Neil Armstrong Middle School sixth grader Olivia Misery. She too will be honored on May 3rd. This is the sixth time since 2007 that the Bethel Park employee or student has received this award. Congratulations to all of this year's awardees. It was a record year for participation at the Neil Armstrong Middle School Battle of the Books. The hundred-and-fifty-two students on twenty-nine teams participating. Winning this year's battle with the almost perfect score were the bookies Chase Duskovich, Cody Heinrich-Bondera, Addison Hill, Owen Newman, and Jake Zaminsky. This year's students are charged with reading six books in preparation for this year's competition. Congratulations to all of the participants. They were all winners because they chose to read. Lincoln Elementary School won the school lunch participation contest sponsored- Lincoln Elementary School won the school lunch participation contest sponsored by Metz Culinary Management, the district's food service provider. Over a ten-year, ten-day period, Lincoln had the highest participation percentage of students purchasing a lunch in the cafeteria, and as a reward for their participation, four students helped food service director John Joe Consulmango create a week's worth of lunch menus that could be enjoyed by all Bethel Park Elementary students. Helping with this project were Jeff Rubicon, Riley Philidge, Grace Perziola, and Rocco Capazoli. Besides picking their favorite foods such as hamburgers and macaroni and cheese, the students also used their creativity to give their foods Pittsburgh Penguin-themed names to cheer on the team in the Stanley Cup Playoffs. The students enjoyed foods such as milk and mac and cheese and flurry fries. Because they won the contest, the Lincoln students also enjoyed a week having a slushy machine in their cafeteria. Franklin fourth graders in Mrs. Lorizada's room used Scratch to create science projects about animal and plant adaption to their habitation. The students had to select a habitation and one plant and one animal that lives in that area. Then they researched their selections to find out how their selections adapted to a specific region they live in. Once their research was completed, they used Scratch, which is a computer code coding program, to draw photos that depicted a conversation between their choices, explaining how they were able to survive in that climate and region. Examples included a dogwood tree and a rat snake, an arctic fox and an arctic willow, a bear and a birch tree, and a giraffe and a prairie blazing star. Memorial first graders in Mrs. Porter's room enjoyed some science fun using one of their favorite candies, Skittles. The students were very excited to see what would happen to the Skittles when water was poured over them. But before they found out what would happen, they made predictions, and then they wrote about their observations after the experiment was over. As you can see from the photos, the results were pretty cool. Bethel Park High School will once again host its annual Arts Fest and Steam Expo on Saturday, May thirteenth, from eleven AM to three PM. The event is free and open to the public. This year's event is shaping up to be bigger and better than ever, with some extremely fun hands-on activities such as icing sugar cookies while riding a bicycle that has been retrofitted to powerspin art, and a sonic art machine that will paint using the vibrations of music that will you will make on a keyboard or drums. Our STEAM Innovation Studios will also be buzzing with activities, and of course, there will be plenty of art exhibits from all of our schools, so there will be something for everyone. Plan to come out to for a great day of art and science. And that concludes my report for this evening.
And you got through all those names so well.
I hope.
What was that? What was that machine? Spectrum?
Yeah, and I still was. So spectroscopics could do, see.
I don't see anybody from student government here. PTA, PTO Council?
Good evening. My name is Laura Hoffman, and I am the co-president of the PTO Council, and I am here this evening to share with the school board and our community a little bit about what our PTA and the PTOs are doing within each of our respective buildings. Let's start with the elementary alphabetically. Let's go with Ben Franklin. The Ben Franklin PTO has had a very busy month. They wrapped up their annual Read-A-Thon with the school reading a combined of sixty-eight-thousand minutes. The winners got to throw pies at a handful of teachers, as well as duct tape a teacher to the wall. Fun was certainly had by all. All the grades at Ben are getting ready to go on their annual field trips this month and next. Franklin students will have the opportunity to visit the Science Center, the Aviary, PNC Park, the Zoo, and the Andy Warhol Museum. And finally, finally, excuse me, the Ben PTO will wrap up the month of April with their annual art show and ice cream social, and in May, they will kick off the Teacher and Appreciation Week and the Spring Book Fair. Over at George Washington, on April seventh, George Washington held a family game night. The games included Pictionary, Family Feud, Human, Hungry, Hungry Hippo, and a good time was had by all. On April eighth, George Washington teamed up with the Goodwill to collect donated items from the for the community, excuse me, from the community. We filled the truck and then some. We collected over twelve-thousand pounds of donated items. Thank you to all of you that donated. Last Friday, the students and the staff of George Washington performed their talents during the Washington's Got Talent Night. The students and staff sang, danced, told jokes, and did gymnastics. It was a great night. Last week, the students of George Washington collected plastic bags to be recycled at our local Giant Eagle Stores in honor of Earth Day. And earlier this evening, the Washington Elementary Run Club, We Run Club, excuse me, had their trail race. The students ran their final mile on the trail with parents and former students cheering them on. Next week begins Staff Appreciation Week at George Washington, followed by Student Appreciation the following week. Over at Memorial, April tenth through the twelfth, Memorial had their Buy-One-Get-One-Free Elastic Book Fair. On May first, they will begin their Teacher Appreciation Week, where they will supply breakfast and lunch for their awesome teachers, as well as many of the other ways to show them how they are appreciated throughout the week. What a great way to show the teachers how much we all care about them and the great job that they do. May eighth, there will be a final PTA meeting of the year. Memorial Kindergarten Orientation will be on May ninth, and they can't wait for all the new families to experience what a great district we have. On May nineteenth is one of the biggest fundraisers at Memorial, the Fun Fair. It's an event for the whole family filled with inflatable slides, face painting, spin art, games, food, a basket auction, and much, much more. In closing out the year at Memorial, they will have the much anticipated Field Day. This year, the theme is holidays. The kids always look forward to this, and we know the volunteers will not disappoint. They have a great day planned for them. Over at William Penn, they had their Ice Cream Social and Dance this month. Children and their families enjoyed ice cream sundaes and as the DJ entertained the group. The Kids with Capes program has started collecting donations for Foster Success, a nonprofit organization that collects needed items for children entering foster care. The students will be making helping heartbags from the collected items to donate to the organization. A Chick-fil-A night was held on April twentieth, with the percentage of sales being donated to William Penn. William Penn also had a welcome will be, excuse me, will be welcoming WTAE at the beginning of May for a weather assembly. At this assembly, the students will present WTAE without donation for Project Bundleup. Over at Neil Armstrong, the Neil Armstrong students are busy this week with the PSSAs. Many classes are taking their field trips for the year. The sixth grade has an assembly on May twenty-fifth on setting goals. They will also be going to the Independence Middle School on May second for a tour. The final bingo of the year at Neil Armstrong will be held this Friday in the cafeteria at six PM. This is a fun evening, and it's open for the whole family to attend. Fifth and sixth grade Fun Days are moving forward, as well as all of our spring concerts for the strings, band, and chorus. Neil Armstrong will also have a fun dance for the students, and they are currently working on the details for this event, which is set for May nineteenth in the school cafeteria. And finally, over at IMS, the IMS PTO is gearing up for the seventh and eighth grade Fun Days, which will be held towards the end of May. And that is all I have to report on behalf of each school, their presidents and their staff, the PTO staffs, what's going on in their schools. Thank you.
Lots and lots going on. Thank you. So listen to the report. Committee reports. We did hold a second budget meeting. I wasn't able to attend on the eighteenth. I think we were on draft eleven and adopted a budget that will be on display for thirty days, with the hope of adopting a final budget at the end of May. Right now, that budget has a zero tax increase. Public comments on agenda items.
Hello, Ken Nagle, twenty-six forty-seven Broad Street. I wanted to first speak on Wonders. I really have nothing to compare it to. Personally, my daughter just started kindergarten this year, and she's in the pilot program of Wonders. I do want to say, on that note, the 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 growth I've seen in the last school year to thus far has been unbelievable. It went from learning letters and doing a lot of the basics to this past weekend, she was writing a book. And it was four pages long, a few sentences, but it was very impressive to me. Over the last few weeks, I've heard a lot about Wonders. I've gotten a lot of feedback from parents and teachers about Wonders, and there's a couple of things that stick out to me about it that just can't be ignored. First thing is the five levels of differentiation. To close reading gaps for students of different levels, this is key. I've talked to teachers. They said this this is a key to understand and identify early and to address early. The tools, we've talked about how our teachers are wonderful, exceptional teachers, and we have a wonderful support staff throughout our schools, and curriculum is just a tool. This is the best tool, too, that we have in front of us to address these problems. I encourage the board to adopt Wonders kindergarten through fourth grade. I know on the agenda it says adopt first through second. I know it's already in third and fourth, and purchase for kindergarten. At least purchase it. Please at least vote to purchase it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sharon Janisik, forty-three fourteen Anna Street. I also want to talk about Wonders, and similar to what Ken had said, we talked last time about how Wonders and letter people and whatever resource we're using is a tool for our teachers to help our students, and I couldn't agree with you more. However, I'd like to respectfully point out, it's concerning to me as a parent when the people using the tools, the teachers, with the students every day. They're the people who know the students best. They know what they need. They know what they can handle. They know what tools they need to do the job that you've asked them to do. And I'm concerned that we are not trusting them enough. And I know that you keep saying that you respect the teachers, and this isn't about that, but I'm sure it feels that way to them. And as a parent, I trust what the teachers are telling me about using the program, using Wonders in first grade, using it in kindergarten. I've had children go through letter people. I have a child using Wonders now. I agree with what the teachers on the Curriculum Committee have said, and I also would rather you vote for Wonders fully implemented in kindergarten, but that's not on the agenda. So I hope that you do vote to purchase Wonders and implement it. If you want to keep the people and the characters and the little songs, I guess that's great, but I hope that we use Wonders to its fullest ability. It provides a way to give support to students who are both behind and ahead and on track. It's a much broader application, and I really think that the children need that. And also, on a side note, I wish Mr. Modrak well, if he's still here, but I noticed that there's no opening or closing of that position or further discussion, so I was wondering if maybe at some point when you get to that, you could let us know what's happening with that position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Megan Dolman, three-one-two-four Eastview Road. I have kind of the other side of this is my daughter's in kindergarten, and she's going through the letter people program right now. She's had a very difficult transition into kindergarten. She has always loved school. She academically is doing just fine. She's learning to read and and doing amazing things, but the academics, you know, pressure that we put on our kids these days as five-year-olds and six-year-olds is incredible, and it just breaks my heart to see her say things like, "I don't like sitting in school and doing papers. I don't like doing these things." But you know what she loves? The letter people. It's the only thing she tells me about with a smile on her face. It seems like a gimmick. It seems when I first heard about puppets and things and kids believing they're real, I thought, "Oh, we'll see. No, no, no." This is incredible. She comes running off the bus, "We met Miss Y. Miss Y came to school today. She was hidden here." It's what connects her to her learning. She loves the books. I told her I was going to a meeting to talk about letter people tonight, and she got a big smile on her face, and I said, "What do you love about the letter people?" And she said, "The books." And I I've talked to people in other districts, other moms that I know, and they talk about their reading programs, and and everyone seems to like them. The kids are doing well, but I haven't seen the same, the books, the the connection, the like the love that the letter people bring, tying in all different subjects. Mr. H. and his happy hair, and and then what we talk about with Mr. H., what we talk about with Mrs. K. and kindness, and and I really like that holistic program that they bring, and I just I have a three-year-old, and I really hope that he gets to experience the same love for learning that the letter people have brought my daughter. So I encourage you to really consider keeping the letter people because they've been a huge part of our family in this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kristy Klein, and I am I live at one-one-one-seven Ryle Drive here in Bethel Park, and I am here tonight because I am in favors of the Wonders program. I have a few points that I would like to speak about tonight, and the first point is is that I trust our teachers and the recommendations. I was here last year when the Wonder program was introduced, and I was here last month when the teachers who piloted the program gave their presentation. It was wonderful. They had so much research, and they spent so much time implementing the program, but also on the the research and the surveys that they did. It was just incredible. I can definitely see why they feel so strongly towards this program. Second, you have mentioned that you wanted to make sure that our kindergartners have fun while they're in school and this, you know, to help cement the kids' love for learning. And I have a child who will be going to kindergarten in twenty-nineteen, and I absolutely want this for her, but I have to also say that I have a child that has an IEP, and she struggled in school, and a child that is behind the other kids in school, they don't get that love for learning. And I think that this program would have would have really helped my daughter, you know, bridge that gap, and it makes me sad that other children like my daughter, you know, might not get that extra help. Third, I have spoken to multiple teachers outside the school district, and they were shocked that we were using a program that did not have a technology component. Looks like I gotta speed up. I emailed many of you, and I mentioned that I was new to the area, and I had never even heard of Bethel Park, and I didn't want to move here, and but after moving here, I am happy, and I do think we have a wonderful school district, but I would like to see the teachers get what they need to help our children. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anne Borderly, Ashland Drive, Bethel Park. I too was present for the presentation a year ago. I was present for the presentation this year on the reading program. One thing I can say for sure about the reading program has been thoroughly researched. We've had participation from a wide number of people. We had, I thought, two excellent presentations, and I hope with this motion, we are buying the program that fits with first through fourth, but we're keeping the program we previously had and then foundations. I hope that there won't be some confusion in each of the classrooms as to what program we are actually presenting, and I worry about the person who's supervising all of this. How will they keep track? I really think if we're purchasing the Wonders program this evening, that that program should be the primary reading program in kindergarten, and if these other are available for those students that might like the extra resource... And if these other are available for those students that might like the extra resource, but I think we should establish that one of these programs is the primary program for the students here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Suzanne Bagetti, 5682 Maryland Drive. I was here last week, and there was a discussion about rigor, and I did some research on rigor for you. Rigor in elementary childhood classrooms simply means to focus on the objectives taken from the standards and to move quickly in an engaging and appropriate way. Now, everyone knows Fred Rogers. He knew this all along. He worked to help children build a base of cognitive skills in a developmentally appropriate way. Children are like our little scientists. They're trying to figure this all out. It's our job to help them. I really appreciate the concern about Wonders being too rigorous or too hard, but I'm here to tell you it's not. The reason I know this is that I had to pilot it to be able to tell you this. I could not just simply look at the program and say I didn't like it. I used Wonders as my teaching tool this year, and it guided me and my children. And I asked some of the children, and I won't tell you who said what, but I asked them to tell me what they were learning this year. And some of them had a lot of funny answers. Some said they're just sorting things out. Some of them are having a lot of fun. Some of them love to play outside. Singing songs. We sing a lot of songs. Someone's learning how to sit in a chair, really important. How to write new letters. They're learning about germs. I'm glad to hear that. Helping, helping new people, learning new songs. A lot of people talked about the songs. We sang new songs today. They all cheered. You won't believe how much they cheered. Learning about new people, learning how to read. They love reading the booklets. One child said, "I can really do it." They love the sight words. They love writing in hock time. Learning new words. They love to play the games at hock time. They love to listen to the news stories. They love seeing fun, fun stuff. They're all concerned about computer lab. They love learning. One child said, "I like learning, because you're learning with me." I was really happy to hear that. Another, like songs. I asked them if it was too hard. One child said, "It makes us think. It's making us smart." And they liked learning with their teacher. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marcy Yee, 5863 Wallace Avenue. Please excuse my attire. I just came from kindergarten Daisy troop meeting where we were making pudding, and so I think I even have some still on me. I've heard a lot of people talking about Wonders versus Letter People, and I've sent, all of you, I believe, received an email from me. And while some people have said that they don't have something to compare to, and some people said, you know, why it's important, I kind of have a unique stance in this. As I have five children, three of them have gone through Letter People. And our oldest is at college. My Michaela is at IMS, and she's advanced in the gifted program and amazing. My 4th grader is doing Wonders at William Penn, and he struggled, struggled beyond belief with reading. But it didn't come to our attention until 2nd grade. I had said, "Something might be up." But I was comparing him to his sister, which you can't do. But the teacher was like, "Nah, he's okay. He's okay." But he wasn't. He does have a learning disability in reading. And I think had we had him in the Wonders program in kindergarten, we would have seen this earlier. And I can say that because I have a daughter at Ben Franklin, who's in kindergarten, who's using Wonders. And she loves school just as much as her siblings do. She's excited about kindergarten just as much as her siblings. Now, is my 8th grader happy that I'm here? To quote her, "Killing the Letter People"? No. She is not. I love the Letter People. She loved the Letter People. I mean, they were real to the children. But Wonders is helping them read. It's helping them write. That's more important, in my point of view. The other thing that I have a unique stance on is I have a 3-year-old also coming up. So I know from the different experiences, Letter People versus Wonders. And I please, you know, I'm glad that you're going to hopefully purchase it for kindergarten, but start using it. Let everyone start using it. It's worth it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, then we'll move into our business items. Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. There are seven items this evening under curriculum. Would any, like any, items help?
Number seven.
Anything else? I move under the curriculum committee, number one, the renewal of NAVYANCE. Number two, the curriculum facilitators for 2017, 2018. Three, California University Student/Teacher Contract. Four, Duquesne University Student/Teacher Contract. Five, professional development. And six, the adoption of McGraw-Hill Education Reading Wonders 2017 for grades 1 and 2.
Second.
Items 1 through 6 under curriculum committee have been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I have a comment on number one. Not anything particular about NAVYANCE, but I wanted to bring up again that last week this time, a group of us went down to the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. And there's a free program that is in the developmental stages called SCORE. And SCORE will work alongside with NAVYANCE for right now as they develop. It is a program that could be used by students at the high school who will be looking at colleges and universities. And it looks not only for majors, but it also looks for interests and to make them feel comfortable and that they would fit in. Examples would be different athletics, or clubs, or just interests in the area, along with this, and then price and cost. So the advantage that we have here, and I wanted to bring it up in front of the board, is that yes, we're approving NAVYANCE if you do, and we need that, but also that we would be working with SCORE, and it is free at this given point. So I think what I'm saying to you is I think we should, we don't really need a motion at this point, but we're going to kind of enter into this piloting situation with SCORE. And if it ever becomes official or there's a cost, then we'd bring it to the board to vote. But I wanted to make sure, in case you heard about it or the public heard about it, that we know it's not completely replacing NAVYANCE at this point, but it's more of a pilot than working in conjunction. And at no cost, we had to let them know pretty quickly. So I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware, and if anyone had questions or a problem. Otherwise, our plan is to let Sir Workman, Ms. Wells, and the Guidance Department move forward with that.
Sounds good.
Okay, so it was unrelated, but I wanted to make sure we got clearance on that, so we could get the free trial. Thank you.
Any other comment on 1 through 6? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry 9 to 0. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. And item number seven, purchase of McGraw-Hill Education Reading Wonders 2017 for kindergarten. Second.
Item number seven, under curriculum, has been moved by Mrs. Buckley and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. I held that out, because I wanted to make a comment, and then I'll ask if anyone else wants to. I did receive and read all emails regarding this vote, and it truly warmed my heart to receive such an outpouring on both sides regarding a curriculum issue. I get this room filled when it's sports and athletics and things like that, and I, truthfully, since I've been on the board, and I used to beg for people to come and talk to us about curricular issues, this has been probably one of the ones that has, I've received quite an outpouring of emails and obviously people who've come to the mic. With this vote, I feel, with my vote, I feel that we're more, moving towards a compromise. We are not approving a curriculum with this vote, in my opinion, but rather purchasing yet another tool for our outstanding educators to use when working with all of our students. The curriculum is, the core curriculum that is there, we have a state standard curriculum for kindergarten. The pieces that we use, the tools that we use that are in the educator's hands are things such as the land of Letter People, foundations. And now, with this purchase, we will have another tool in our kit to work with our students on for our educators. It's in their hands what they are doing with these tools. And it is my hope that my kindergarten teachers will come together with this compromise and with our administrators, make that happen to the best of their abilities for the children in Bethel Park as they have in the past. Any other comments?
Okay, I guess I ready it first. All right. Yes, I'm going to reiterate some of the things that you said, Mrs. Cook. First, thank you all, some of you here, and there's many others that are not here, unless you're not speaking, I don't know the face or the name. But there, believe us, there was tremendous amount of emails and phone calls and everything else on this. And in addition, some of the school board members, a couple of weeks ago, we took the time of a whole day on Friday and sat in on all the different classes, some kindergarten, some 2nd grade, et cetera, and saw Wonders and saw Letter People in action. Until then, I knew nothing about it, okay? But I have a unique perspective here, because I have, and you guys have not listened to all these emails that are out there and been there in the class, and some of you are speaking because of your kids. And a kid can influence you whether they like it or not. If a kid likes it, then, oh, hey, this is great. Or if they don't like it, then it's bad. There's a couple of misperceptions or whatever. First, Letter People does have different levels. It was stated that Wonders does, and it sounded like it meant that Letter People does not. I saw it, and I've been talking to kindergarten teachers that do Letter People, and some people that are teaching in other districts even got involved with this and was talking to us. And putting it all together without boring you with a lot of the detail in that, but we do trust the teachers, okay? And this is why we have taken great pain to make sure that we have taken the liberty to say that there are tools. This is not a curriculum. We know that the teachers, the kindergarten teachers in particular, are talking, because 1st grade through 4th grade, it's a slam dunk. Everybody agrees, no questions, it's good, you know, no conflicts. But kindergarten, it's a, it's a unique grade level. That's the foundation of whether a kid's going to like school or not a lot of times. And something like Letter People, from what I read, is, has helped many kids. Wonders can help many kids, too. I'm coming from the point where I see that there's benefits to both. I am not the teacher. I don't know how to put this together. I don't know what the teachers are going to do, but I fully trust the teachers, because I was there listening to them, their love for whatever it was. And I know without any doubt that having two tools will be the best option right now. In one year or two years, we can see what happens. If those teachers that say, and I doubt very much if we're going to say get rid of Wonders, I think Wonders will stay here, because there's a lot of benefits. We see that. But I don't know for sure what the teachers in kindergarten are going to end up doing with Letter People and Wonders. It may be where Letter People is going to fade away. But it's not up for me to decide, because I'm not the teacher, and I do trust them. And so having two tools is how I'm going to be voting today. And so we do want Wonders as well. So thank you very much for all your correspondence. I learned a lot in the past couple of weeks here. Last meeting, we had discussed a lot of this, so sorry if you, and there was nobody here, actually. So I'm glad to see that this room's full today. Last week it was pretty empty. So thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rule.
I just want to thank the committee that did all the research, and I can say that I was really pleased that they gave good presentations and good reports. The one thing that was missing for me is that I hadn't heard from all the kindergarten teachers. And I like to hear all aspects before I make my decision. I was pleased that the, that we heard from several of the kindergarten teachers who were not on the committee, and how they expressed their interest and their concerns on all, on both programs. They also went so far as to tell us how they could possibly be blended and could see aspects good for both programs. I also talked to some people outside the district, because I'm on several boards, so I got some other opinions on the programs, too. I also went to a dyslexia presentation, of which Wonders was not on the top of their list, for children who had some difficulties in reading. So based on that, I really want to go with the blended program. I believe that they both deserve to work their way through, and I think they can do it, and reading with some of the kindergarten teachers who have already tried to blend some of it, I think it's doable. And I think it'd be good for the teachers to work together and to work with the 1st grade teachers to make sure that that transition works well for our students. So I will be voting, you know, to purchase the program, but to keep the programs both in place.
And Mr. Ammit?
I just wanted to say a few things as well. Came into the process with a completely open mind about either programs. I appreciate all the research that was done from the committee. They had me leaning toward them, and I stated publicly that I was ready to go with the full adoption of the Wonders program through kindergarten through 2nd grade, as I, as I was just in favor of everything that it had said, the consistency that it was going to have. And it's the consistency that I'm concerned about going from kindergarten up through 2nd grade. Now, all through, up until last week's meeting, I was still intending to go for the adoption. But after the discussion, and again, many of you weren't here, there was a detailed, probably, I don't know, a good hour or so, discussion about what to have. And after listening to all the discussion, after reading the emails from numerous teachers, parents throughout the district, and hearing what this was, I decided that I'm going to vote in favor of purchasing the program. But I do this with the understanding, as Mrs. Cook said, that our administrators are going to work to establish plans to ensure that our kindergarten and 1st grade teachers will work together to come up with the best program that's going to, through the Letter People and the Wonders program, to ensure that the consistency is going to be there for our students and for the program to succeed. And with that in mind, that's why we'll be voting in favor for this tonight.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say something. There is a book written a few years ago, actually probably 25, 30 years ago, called Better Late Than Early. And the main theme of the whole thing was it's better for kids to have a later success and an early failure. I think the worst thing you can do with a young child is to have an attempt a reading program, a rigorous reading program, and fail at it. The worst thing you want to hear from your kindergarten student coming home and saying, "Mom, I'm stupid," because they develop a negative attitude towards education, and that's the less thing we want. So I think it's important to keep the Letter People. I think it's important to keep kindergarten fun. It's not necessary to make great advances in kindergarten. You don't, you don't judge where somebody is in a marathon by where they're standing at the mile, the first mile. So I think we need to keep it fun, keep the students learning, have them have an interest in learning, and be excited about school rather than be turned off. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting for this compromise.
I just want to say that I think that in today's world, compromise is a wonderful thing. And then I think we worked together really well last week to listen to all your points and to try to come up with a way to compromise. My concern is, as one of the audience members said, that there is a direction that is given from the administration, as Dave said also, as to, you know, how to use these two programs or which program to use more or whatever. But I think that'll work its way out in the next year's use of the product.
Mrs. Cook, if I may?
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to thank all the people that have been involved in this decision. It's gone on well for over a year. The parents, the teachers, other staff members, administrators, the board, and so on. And no one takes this decision lightly. And I feel that a compromise where the teachers will continue to work together, because see, that's the thing. It has already started. There are teachers who are communicating and using components of and making everything be what's best for the children. So I think if we can build upon that, and we certainly trust our administrators to work on that, and it's going to be difficult, I mean, it's not going to be an easy task, but if everyone continues to cooperate, and the children will benefit, and that's what it's all about. So for a variety of reasons, not just what I said tonight, but all the things that were said last Tuesday, I support this. I think it's a step in the right direction.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step back a step and talk about what Mrs. Cook talked about. Many, many years ago, before my days on the board, I was
Many, many years ago, before my days on the board, I was a member and chairman of the Citizens Curriculum Committee. And I know that no one probably knows what we did, but it, it was an interesting thing, and curriculum's important to me, and I went and spent four or five years doing that. But to see everyone here and the number of emails and the responses coming from curriculum, that's tremendous. People are paying attention. And there's nothing better than people paying attention because sometime we feel like we're working in a vacuum, and we don't know what anyone thinks because most of the time, no one shows up. We have budget meetings, we've had three, four, or five. Mr. Karazik's put in hours of preparation over the years on budget meetings, and we're sitting there talking to ourselves, you know? I mean, it's like, it's crazy. So thank you all very much for everything you've done, from the, the teachers, the administrators, the parents, the emails. I mean, I, I, almost every five minutes, we're getting email today, yesterday, over the weekend about this particular decision. I think that I will support the purchase of the kindergarten curriculum, but I think, as everyone else has said, I think it's going to be a combination. It needs to be a combination. And as Mrs. Dobus just said, we find a way to work together, and I think that's truly important. And there's only one reason what we do this, it's for the education of our children. So that's my reason for supporting this.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen, do you want to say anything?
But I, I think when we look back at the processes last year, when we first started evaluating Wonders, I think we did a really good thing in the upper grades to pilot. Pilot's a great experience to learn and to be able to optimize, adjust, and optimize the program. And I think in a lot of ways, you know, we're looking at committing to the upper grades. There was so much great feedback that I think we probably still need to, you know, optimize, adjust, find the right mix of the two different programs. And I think that's what the current proposal does. So that's why I'm going to vote for it also. And just to echo what everybody else said, you know, the feedback, you think we were going to talk about the football team here tonight. You know, this is, this is great to see all the emails and comments and support.
All right, then.
Mrs. Cook, can I say one more thing? Sure. I would like to thank all the teachers that volunteered to pilot this program. I, I know that it would have been easier for you not to do it. And please don't, don't take this vote as a slap in the face that we don't like the program. I think we do. That's why we're going to wind up adopting it for four grades. It's just that we feel that at the kindergarten, we need a little bit of a different solution. So, thanks again.
And we are, with this vote, hopefully purchasing the program, K-2, 4. So I think that overall speaks to a, a great compromise for everyone, a win-win, particularly for our, our students. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are 13 items under personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out?
Number two.
Number two?
Five, six, and seven as a group. You don't have to do them separately.
Five, six, and seven?
Mm-hmm.
Any others? If not, I move item one, approval of substitute. Item three, approval of leave of absence. Item four, acceptance of a resignation. Eight, appointment of personnel. Nine, approval of temporary assignment. Ten, approval of extended school year program. Eleven, memorandum of understanding Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Twelve, addendum to the contract. And thirteen, memorandum of understanding Bethel Park Paraprofessionals AIDS Educational Support Unit.
Second.
Item one, three, four, and eight through 13 under Personnel Committee have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
I move item two, approval of extra duty responsibility program.
Second.
Item number two has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And I abstain on that item, so it carries eight to zero.
Mrs. Cook, do you have a conflict of interest on that motion?
I have to state why I'm abstaining.
Only if it's a conflict of interest, you have to say that it's a conflict of interest. If you're abstaining for any other reason, you do not, but if it's a conflict of interest, you do.
Yes, I do. Mrs. Rule.
Okay. I move item five, approval of staffing changes.
Did you say we can move all those together?
Yes.
Yes, she said five, six, and seven together.
Oh, okay. I move item five, it's approval of staffing changes. Item six, approval of support, staff furlough, and seven, change of assignment.
Second.
Items five, six, and seven under Personnel Committee have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on these items?
I'll, I'll be voting no on them. I'm just not convinced that the staffing changes and reductions are necessarily in the best interests of the students.
Any other comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That item carries eight to one. We have no facilities and services committed this evening. So we're on to Finance Committee and Mr. Ammit.
Eight items this evening under the Finance Committee. Would anybody want any of these held out? Hearing none, I move items one through eight. Number one being the April 2017 salaries and bills. Number two being the March 2017 financial report. Number three, budgetary transfers. Number four, approval of educational services agreement. Number five, Pathfinder School Administrative Budget. Number six, the approval of the purchase of Call Manager Support Districtwide Telephone System. Number seven, renewing of the food service contract. And number eight, replacement of Independence Middle School Grade Eight Chromebooks one year earlier, doing this one year earlier.
Second.
Items one through eight under Finance have been moved by Mr. Ammit and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
I'd just like to make a comment, please, to make the taxpayers aware. For number five, the Path, excuse me, Pathfinder School Administrative Budget, just to let you know that Mrs. Cook and I attended a meeting there and spent a lot of time at the Pathfinder School, and we're very happy to do it. It's a great group of hardworking people and working with our students and students from around the area, and it's, it's a time, time well spent.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to comment on item number eight. We are purchasing Chromebooks a little bit early, and the reason is that some of the Chromebooks we purchased didn't hold up quite as well as we hoped. The new Dell Chromebooks are a little bit more durable. They've proven themselves more durable, and that's the reason we had to purchase some of them early.
And we're not going to throw the old ones away. We're going to use those also.
He's going to talk with the plan and let us know what that is.
And it won't be going over the original budget we had planned for the purchase of the Chromebooks. It'll be taken out of the existing technology value as well.
Anything else? All in favor of items one through eight, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry nine to zero. Other, Mr. Spacuzza, will you take other for me this evening?
Sorry, Mrs. Cook, seeing nothing under Facility and Services, I guess you had to, had to get me to talk about something. There's one item tonight under other. It's the Bethel Park High School Competitive Cheerleading Booster Club. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to recognize the Bethel Park High School Competitive Cheerleading Booster Club as an improved booster organization. I move that item.
Second.
Item one under other has been moved by Mr. Spacuzza and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries nine to zero. We are now to the point of public comments on anything you wish to address the board about. You have two minutes at the microphone. Name and address, please.
Hi, Sharon Jansek, 4314 Anna Street. I did want to say thank you so much for all of the discussion and the explanations that we've been having the past couple of months. I really appreciate it. It's enlightening, and it helps us know what's going on. So I really appreciate that. Thank you. And I also wanted to mention that I am hosting a meet the candidate night Tuesday over at the municipal building, 7 to 9. And the candidates have been invited, so if anybody wants to come, meet the school board candidates, we'll be over municipal council chambers next Tuesday, 7 to 9. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Everyone talked beforehand, I guess everyone's talked out, huh? Any board comments? Do you want to do board comments this evening? What's, everybody's talked out? All right, then, also, down at that end, if that group wants to talk down there.
No, you were going to start in the middle, remember?
Oh, yeah. I think you have another comment. Oh, I'm sorry.
This is a strange comment, and it regards the story going around the district that our high school principal is gone from the district, that he isn't there, although that's not been affirmed by anybody. I've talked to board members who say they're still looking into this. But if it is indeed just a rumor, it is very well-founded rumor. It's all over Bethel Park that our high school principal has resigned and is gone. Now, I don't expect you to comment and give credence to a rumor because that just makes it more.
We had an assistant principal.
Pardon me?
We had an assistant principal resign and take a job in another district from the high school.
At the high school?
Correct.
Well, maybe that's what it's all about.
He just left.
But that's not in this agenda.
Well, no, that was a previous agenda, and then we're going to be, you know, discussing over the summer what our plans are for the administration.
You are going to, okay.
We're going to discuss it at some point.
All of those issues someone brought up about Officer Modrak. We do have another officer in our district, another school resource officer, so he is handling right now, but a lot of those things will be handled over the summer.
This was particularly, it even mentioned the school district that he was going to, to take a position as superintendent of schools in that district. And it was the principal at the high school. I don't know what we can do about this type of rumor, except obviously you haven't approved it, so it's not happening this month. But it is rather widespread throughout Bethel Park and, you know, that, that he's gone, that he isn't even there anymore, so.
Well, we have a.
So he was there today.
Active rumor mill in Bethel Park that tells us a number of things that aren't necessarily accurate. But to my knowledge, the only person who resigned was the, Mr. Shou from the high school.
To date, that's correct.
I'll just say one more thing that I neglected to say before, and I think a few of the other board members mentioned it, but I, I just felt the whole process by which the board worked and the community worked together to get this, the, the process for the Wonders program down in kindergarten purchased, and it was a great collaboration politically, and I, I just like to see that that's the way our community can work and everybody can work if we work together. The process will still need to go on, of course, but, and, and I have no doubt that it will, given all the effort that was put into it thus far. And I just want, I forgot to mention that earlier, and I think a few other board members addressed it, but I wanted to address that as well in the comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Christensen.
Hi. Okay. Yeah, sorry, I have a few things here. Okay. First, I'd like to thank, because I didn't actually thank the teachers specifically for the pilot. It was all the correspondence, which I was assuming included the teachers, but I do want to thank, without the pilot program, I would not have been able to come up with the decision that I had done. So that was very useful and important. Also, Mr. Spacuzza had, mentioned a, Russ, he mentioned, he mentioned.
Are you Zeb? Because Zeb, Zeb can't say my name either.
I know, I'll tell you. Sorry about that. But he mentioned something that is a sore point with me, too, here, and that is about the audience. This, this is very impressive. It's very encouraging.
Free concerts in a row.
But when you see very few people, and we have a few good regulars, which is great, you know, that, that's, that's important. I'm glad somebody's here pretty regularly, and I don't know who's watching on TV even. But the thing is, it's so important, because here we are, we had a budget, we talked about it last week, with zero tax increase. And actually, the rumor out there was that, you know, they, they didn't know anything about it. And I thought something like that was very important. And I have to say, first of all, thanks to the board and definitely, you know, Dr. Pasquale for all his effort on helping keep us with a zero tax increase, two years in a row, to, you know, not even just one, but this is the second year in a row. And we have a teacher's contract and everything else, but the whole point being is that I'm glad to see people here, and I wish we can get the word out to get more people involved, because that's the only way rumors will be squashed. Second, third, I guess it is actually, I want to thank and congratulate all the people. I won't go down the list since, for sake of time, but it's again, Bethel Park's doing great. So, you know, thank you, and that's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Rule.
Well, some other school districts are struggling to even make ends meet. We've been very fortunate that we're on a level playing field, and every time I go to my meetings, they really envy us that we're not struggling, and some of them are just trying to find money to keep the teachers that they have. So we're fortunate that we're right on track. I just want to mention that Shasta, which is the Southfield area school districts, we have 22 of them belong. We will be, each one has two students that they recognize at the Hilton Garden, and that'll take place this Saturday, and Bethel Park will have two. And they're students that have overcome a challenge in their life. And I don't have their names yet, I don't know if you do. Do you have them? Yeah. But they'll be recognized on Saturday.
They will.
So we'll bring you a little more about that, but it's a real nice event for them. Also, Steel Center will be having Senior Recognition Night on the 23rd of May, in which all of our seniors who attend the Education and Career Center will be recognized, and that's always a nice event, and that's held at Community College. And the last thing, for the Allegheny Intermediate Unit, which we have 42 school districts, we are talking about this Remake Learning. There are over 300 different activities and sites that will be offering Remake Learning. You can go and see a lot of STEM projects, all types of projects during May 15th to the 26th. And these books, are there some of these in the school? I saw a couple out here. If not, I can have some sent out for the Allegheny Intermediate Unit if any of you are interested. But it's a nice book. It's a place to take your children, they can have a good time, and most of the events are free. So be good to go. So it is May 15th to the 26th.
Thank you, Mrs. Rule. Mr. Spacuzza.
There's like a little running joke in the district. Every time Dr. Jan Santi tries to say my name, he, I'm, I'm not quite sure what he says, but it's never Spacuzza, I can promise you that. I think the last time he actually got it correct, we're both of the same heritage, and I'm really confused why he can't do that. I'd like to first recognize Joe Consolmagna and Mary Gallagher. I think that the night that we spent at the IU was tremendous. I think it was great recognition for our district, all the people that participated. It, it just shows that we get behind causes here in Bethel Park, and we do a great job. And I appreciate that. And Mr. Workmeister, is that correct?
No, you butchered it. No, you did it perfect.
If you've attended any board meetings over the last nine or 10 years, you know that I always thank people for attending the meetings. I, I'm so frustrated whenever no one or very few people show up unless we're doing a cutting of program or changing something or, you know, you know, tearing down the trees or some, I don't know, whatever it might be, but it's a process, and the process works when you come and you, you participate. Our committee, committee meetings, as last week's was, was great discussion. If you miss that, then when you come to this meeting, you sit there and think, well, why are they voting on this? How did they make that decision? You know, we, we want to be as transparent as possible, and I think we, we are, and, but it doesn't always appear that way. So if you, if you come, try to come to the committee meeting, I think that's probably the meeting that makes the most sense if you want to, and the budget meeting. Mr. Karazik just kicks butt on budget, I can tell you that. And it's very, very important, and I was going to say something else, but I'm just old and tired, and I can't remember what it was. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mrs. Buckley.
Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I, too, would like to thank all the people involved. Thank you, Mrs. Cook. I, too, would like to thank all the people involved. I say it every month, and I mean it when I say it, the report from the staff and all the things that take place with the teachers and children, and it just, it's overwhelming. And speaking of one of those activities that took place, if you didn't catch this this year, mark your calendar for those of you who have younger children. We attended the Welcome to the Third Annual Bunny Brunch, and it was offered through the Bethel Park High School DCA and FCC LA, which is the Family Career and Community Leaders of America. They had a variety of activities, and not only the children who were there to be a part of, it was fun to watch the kids who planned it, and the adults who were with it, and all the work that they put in. It was very enjoyable. So that, truthfully, is the first one I've ever attended, because I now have a granddaughter. And I've said this before, but I'll repeat it again. For those of you who are interested, I hope you've seen these signs around the community. It is the Special Needs Fair and Expo Saturday, April 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. It is being held at Pathfinder School, but that doesn't mean it's all about Pathfinder School. They are bringing in a wealth of people to just share with the parents, and also there's children's activities there, too. So come and meet the staff at Pathfinder, because we said earlier, it's a great group of people, and I hope you can make it. And that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Means?
Well, I, for one, am glad that we're done dealing with the Wonders program. It's been quite an ordeal. But I think it was well worth the effort, because even though there's three of us up here that are engineers by training, work with numbers all the time, but reading is the fundamental basis of education. I never met a person that reads well that was ignorant. People that read are usually well-informed and know a lot about a lot of different things. So it's important that we get this right. And again, I'd like to thank everybody involved with it, the citizens, the teachers that did the research and implemented the program. I guess the students were the guinea pigs, too, so, thanks again.
Thank you. Mrs. Dobis?
I thought it was really cool that IMS recognized somebody who works there for the extra effort that he put into his job. And the pictures were just amazing, the things that he was able to accomplish. And I think that's very special, that IMS was able to come together and recognize that individual. And I thank you for doing that, because I think that every, you know, a paycheck's one thing, but I think that people recognizing what you're doing is sometimes even more valuable. And in regard to our compromise, I would actually like to thank Dr. Pascarella, because at one point during the meeting last week, he stepped forward and said, you know, suggested the blended approach. And as an administrator, you know, it's so much easier to oversee a program and watch it. So it's going to be a task for him and for our curriculum director to make this work. So I'd like to, I thank you for your, for, like, taking the bull by the horns and pushing us forward.
Making a recommendation to us. And compromise is often, I think, the best recommendation when you have two sides and you have a divide. If you can compromise, that is the best way you can accomplish the most. Thank you all for being here. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.